Mr. Phillips, any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No opposed, alright, there's the committee assignments. Meeting dates and times.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we continue with the same practices we've been doing, meeting on the second Monday of the month, with the exception of April, because that falls in spring break. I would ask that you consider an alternate date of April 22nd for that month. And then the same situation in July, the second Monday is the 8th, and we typically shut down during the first week, and we have a lot of people on vacation that week, so I would suggest that an alternate day would be July the 22nd.
Alright, so if I got this right, the meetings will be on the second Mondays of every month except April and July.
Correct.
And April will be the 22nd, which is a Monday night, I guess?
That's right.
And July 22nd is a Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, and everything else is the second Monday of the month?
Correct, and I would ask that everyone keep the...
The two meetings in March.
Say again?
The two meetings in March.
It is the two meetings in March, correct.
What days are those?
There's a March 11th and March 25th.
25th, okay.
And we ask that you reserve that fourth Monday, last Monday of the month, in case we have any special call of meetings.
Okay, and all these are at 6:30, continuing at 6:30?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody have any questions? Entertain a motion that we'll do the meetings and times as presented by Dr. Stanley.
Salute.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Ms. Parker, that we will have the meetings on the Monday nights as listed by Superintendent Stanley at 6:30. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Before we get too far into this thing, just want to welcome Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Tanner to our board. Hopefully, hopefully we can, y'all can help us survive and get through this, so if you have any questions at any time, just say, "What the heck are you doing?" And don't hesitate, just, we'll try to, you know, help you along, and y'all can help us along.
Thank you.
Look forward to working with you. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor, and I'll recite a little bit to you. At this time, the board will hear matters from the floor. Each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please be respectful of the three-minute time limit. Prior to speaking, please state your name and address. Comments must be directed to the board and not to staff, the audience, or the media. First speaker is Ms. Coleman.
Good evening, I'm Crystal Coleman from Altibus, Virginia, and let me first say Merry, Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Christmas is already over. I wish you all a very happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. We often hear the phrase, "Elections have consequences." We clearly see this in our daily lives from a national perspective, but it is no less impactful locally. Some find themselves in elected positions as the result of a lark. Would anybody really vote for me? Some arrive as one-hit wonders. Then there are others who present themselves as someone else to the voters. The one constant among all of them is that the 15 minutes of fame quickly ends and the truth emerges. To paraphrase the final scene in the movie, "The American President," we have serious problems to solve, and we need serious people to solve them. The structures that support meaning and purpose in our children's lives are being ripped from them. Is it any wonder that learning loss, absenteeism, increased behavioral problems in the classroom, and reported increases in psychological problems have become part of their world? The whole concept of absolutes is being ripped out from under them each time they are told that boys can be girls, and girls can be boys, that coming to school, working hard, being ethical are not esteemed concepts, that success is dependent upon what group you identify with rather than merit and talent, that plagiarism is okay, and there really is no right or wrong. Even gummy bears tainted with fentanyl are not out of reach. After 30-plus years in the classroom, I know for sure that students achieve their best within a structured setting, where there are clear rules, clear limits, where there are expectations for hard work, responsibility, and individual merit. Somehow, just mouthing the words parental rights sends some into a tailspin with attacks of, "You're against teachers, you're against the school." I'm here to tell those shouting the loudest a resounding no. If a teacher is doing what they are supposed to be doing to educate our children, they don't have one more minute in the day to push ideologies or doctrines. Good, solid teachers who are the role models that parents want for their children are barely keeping their head above water with ever-increasing responsibilities. Campbell County has been blessed with many, and I have had the honor to share many years with them, but to say that we don't have problem areas in our school system is to be wearing blinders. It won't take this community long to size up who's who, probably not even that oft-quoted 15 minutes. Each Campbell County student has the right to grow up with their innocence intact. Do we have the serious people to guarantee that? Thank you.
Well, I'm going to wish everyone a Happy New Year, looking forward to being, seeing the new changes. Good evening, my name is Jackie Mendez, and I am a resident of Evington, Virginia. I realize that there is a new school board that was recently elected on the premise of being conservative. What does that mean exactly? I have attended board meetings for the last 24 months and have never heard any of the new board members speak, and I'm curious about their thoughts on the quality of Campbell County's children's education. First order of business, you will be asked to evaluate curriculum and policy aligning with the district's mission to provide a world-class education. Does this include the indoctrination of children being subjected to a character education laced with equity and inclusion? Are you aware that the numerous vendors approved by Castle must meet the five broad and interrelated areas of competence and highlight examples for each? Self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, relationship skills, and responsible decision-making. As a conservative, are these initiatives and policies acceptable to you? Do you know that using this model has not improved the reading and math scores we continuously learn are below grade level? Ask your colleague on this board who attended an SEL session in Nova not too long ago, what kids are put through. Participate in a webinar, you'll be surprised at what is covered and emphasized, and perform a deep dive, inform yourself, and show leadership. Do not go where the path may lead, go instead where there is no path and leave a trail. And that's a quote by Ralph Walder Emerson. When I was in elementary school in New York, we were encouraged to participate in library hours, home reading assignments, book reports, oral presentations, and at times debates in advanced grades. As a daughter of immigrants, my parents trusted the educational system to educate their children. Are you familiar what is happening in the schools today? So I sincerely hope you are interested in seeking solutions for these concerns that are vital for each child to master in the early grades, to propel them to greater heights in their educational journey. Remember that you were elected to provide solutions to reverse the necessary reforms parents have voiced in this campaign. I have heard many concerns as I spoke to many parents during my campaign, and the campaign is over, it is time to act, and now the real work begins. I will trust but verify your positions and votes during your tenure, and I want to be wrong, but I have a gut feeling nothing will change and business will continue as usual. And thank you.
Next order of business is approval of the December 11th meeting minutes.
Read the meetings and make a motion to approve.
I hear a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Phillips, a second by Dr. Miller, that we approve the December 11th meeting minutes. Any questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Payment of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I reviewed the bills for past month and moved to approve payment.
Second.
A motion by Dr. Miller, and a second by Mr. Maddox, that we pay the bills. Any questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Acceptance of donations. Michelle.
Tonight you have 16 donations that were listed on board docs, unless you have any questions on those, I ask that you approve them as presented.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by Mrs. Parker, and a second by Mrs. Tanner, that we approve the donations. Any questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of request for supplemental appropriations, Ms. McClanahan.
Tonight you have one appropriation, unless you have any questions on that, I ask that you approve it.
Motion. Second.
Motion by Mr. Maddox, second by Mr. Phillips, that we approve the request for supplemental appropriation. Any questions or discussions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Consideration of designation of alternate staff member attending board meetings, Dr. Stanley.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that you consider Dr. Amy Hale, our Assistant Superintendent, as my designee in case I couldn't be at a meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Parker, and a second by Mr. Maddox, that we approve Dr. Hale as an alternate staff member in Dr. Stanley's absence. Any questions? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright. Personnel report, Ms. Hunley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Let's see, from last month, we have not had that much change in our personnel report. We're still sitting at about a dozen classified openings that we're looking to fill, and then for certified positions, we have lost two in the last month or so, but I mentioned before, mid-year is a time where we do lose a couple staff members, but it's also an opportune time for us to fill those positions, because we have student teachers and things like that. So we have six certified positions open, but a couple of those have been since the beginning of the year, the ones that I've mentioned that we've just absorbed the first semester and will continue to do so for second semester. And then for transportation, Dr. Ranelle let me know that he is still looking for four full-time and five part-time positions. Unless you have any other questions, I'd ask that you approve the report as written.
Anybody have any questions? I got a question.
Sure.
What's the status of the job fair for this?
Yes, oh, you know what, I didn't think, we didn't think about adding that to the agenda tonight. So our job fair is going to be February 10th, so we'll meet the, the school board would be the meet the day after that, right? The Monday after that. It's going to be the same format as last year, which we were really excited about changing that format. It's going to be for classified and certified. Last year was the first year that we did that. So we're going to restructure a little bit, I thought it went really well last year, but there were some areas that we saw that we thought that we could improve, but if you remember, we had classified staff down on one side at Brookfield High School, we're still getting it in at Brookfield even with construction going on, we've confirmed that, we're all good with that. We have to now, because it's all gone out. And then, if you remember, in the foyer area is where we had registration, and then we had some other kind of recruitment tables set up, our mentor coordinators, Dr. Pontius was there with his special ed staff, this, knew this year we'll have licensure there, our technology department set up a fun table. This year, we're also adding current teachers, our veteran teachers are coming to have a table so that new staff, or potential staff can speak to them about what it's like to work in Campbell County. And then the big show was in the cafeteria, where all of our schools had a table set up, recruitment style, so they had the opportunity to show off their school. So we're doing the same format with a few upgrades, we would love to see you there, it's nine to about 12 on that Saturday, the 10th. Thank you for asking that, did not think to add that in tonight.
So how are you getting the word out?
So we, Facebook, of course, all our social media sites, I'll do a press release next week, I have that on the calendar. Something that also worked well last year, we did a school messenger message to our entire community, so it was an email that sent out that said, "You may not be looking for a job, but how can you help us get the word out? Please share with your friends, your family, your colleagues, your neighbors, come work in Campbell County." We've also reached out to all the colleges in the area, student teachers that are in our buildings right now. I monitor regularly, we have people that apply that don't know about the job fair, so I'll send them a personal email that says, "Hey, I noticed you applied, come to our job fair on the 10th." Actually did a round of that today, so I got a couple emails back from that. Right now, we were working on logistics and things earlier today, we had 33 people, I think we said, already signed up, and last year we were close to, it was about 80 or 90 that came total. And we did hire a bunch, classified and certified, from our job fair. Career fair, trying to change the name, it's career fair, wants your career to be in Campbell County.
Wait a minute, how'd you jump from job fair to career fair?
Career, it just sounds better. Career fair, we want your career to be in Campbell County.
Well, but you're not talking about the career fair here later on in the springtime, right?
No, 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 that's something that, you mean that Mr. Hardy does?
Yeah.
No, that's different, that's still his, yes.
We're still with just the job fair.
This is our career fair, yes. Job, career fair, I'll keep calling it job fair for you.
That's a heck of a response for not having anything prepared, so I appreciate it.
Okay, thanks, sorry, I was not prepared, but there you go. I can talk about it all day, I can tell you all about it, yes.
That's good, that's good.
Can I offer suggestions?
Of course.
We all have these nice new electronic signs.
I'm sorry?
It's a new signage we have, I think Brooklyn has new signage.
Yes, so that is something...
Maybe put it on that.
Yes, we did that last year, a couple of our schools did, we have a principals' meeting this week, and I have a presentation prepared for them to go over it, and that's one of the things that we ask our schools to do, to put it on their social media sites, their websites, and their marquees if they have the fancy electronic ones.
Thank you.
Yes, any other suggestions are welcome.
Alright, so now entertain a motion for the approval of the personnel report.
Motion.
I'll second it, somebody motioned it down.
And Ms. Parker made the motion, and Mr. Phillips gave the second, I believe. Any questions or discussion? If none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. McClanahan's going to fill out all of our statement of economic interest for us.
Just a reminder, that's due by February 1st, so get them to me as soon as you can.
Dr. Hale, you going to tell us when we're going to school next year?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, last month I did bring a draft of the calendar, and based on feedback from principals and teachers, we did make a couple of adjustments to this most current draft. You do have a copy of it, and we have displayed it, and you'll notice that it does say the draft of January 4th, just to help, so for documentation. We have moved the orientation day, which is a great day for our students and our teachers, for kindergarten, pre-K, 6th grade and 9th grade, to Monday, August 12th, so that's moving that up a day, and then moving the first day of school to August 13th. What that allows us to do, too, is then we are able to add in, before December 20th was going to be the first day of winter break, it's a Friday, so it's really hard to have disjointed weeks, and we did hear that feedback for a lot of reasons. The end of December, moving into January before the end of the semester is huge for us, as we have testing wrapping up, as we have instruction as well. And so moving the last day of school to the 20th gives us those two days so that we don't return to school on a Thursday, Friday. It's really not ideal for instruction, and it does give time off, you know, and hopefully that will help with attendance, as sometimes that is impacted prior to a break. One thing is preliminary, this is in alignment with other school divisions, and so we do have students who go to programs that are with other divisions, so preliminarily, it is similar to what is going to be done in the, in the area roughly. We all have a little bit different that we do with professional development and different workdays, but we do think it's important to have that time, and then also have full weeks, really do help with attendance. This is considered informational, so it's not anything for your approval in February. We plan to bring that for actual approval during the February school board meeting. One potential concern that had been brought up previously, and this is part of why we moved our open houses up a day, is transportation routes, it's a lot of work on that department. We did talk to Dr. Ranelle with this moving school up a day, is that if that would be doable for that department, it is a lot of work. And with us keeping the open house for that Wednesday, it will still give his team, but we are appreciative that they are willing to make that adjustment, because we do know bus routes, transportation is very important for our families. So again, it's informational, but I will be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Did I give you that copy?
I mean, that's what she said, this is last year.
You got any more of those?
Absolutely.
So the important thing is, the day we start school is...
Thank you, ma'am. One day sooner.
One day sooner.
And then we go to school one day later for December 20th. And then that way, we wouldn't return on a Thursday, Friday. The way the holidays have fallen have made it a little bit, it's hard, you know, to give adequate time off, but also make sure we're still doing the instruction and business we need to do at school.
So we vote on this next month?
Correct, yes. So I'm, of course, always happy to answer any questions, but we really did want to respond to feedback and, you know, appreciate that, and really thought this would, would help, especially to ensure that students get that quality instruction before break, and then after we're not coming back for, for two days with testing.
So you got your professional development, they're all in the orange here, and you've gotten feedback from your principals that they work best with the scheduling, sometimes you hear that those days could be on better days, we've got a lot of feedback and got them...
Exactly.
...positioned optimally.
Absolutely, the biggest, one of the biggest challenges for next school year is because spring break is so late, we definitely need that professional development in the spring, especially if we don't have any winter weather in between there. And then also, it's really critical to have at least that one professional day in between semesters, because next week, we have, we have new courses starting, teachers in some, especially our high schools that are changing semesters, they have brand-new students that will be starting their classes and new preps, so we really want to be mindful, so that January, for us, it's the 16th this year, for next school year, it's going to be on the 13th. It's important for them to have that day to be able to do the work they need to prepare for that change in semester and wrapping up the first. That's one of the biggest. And then by having professional development September 27th, what it allows us to do is to not overload them when they come back to start, and especially with our new teachers, with, we have a lot of new staff, and so we want to make sure that we are able to help them during New Teacher Week, be ready, but there are some things that they don't need right then. They actually need it in September when they're getting settled and able to absorb, so that has been a huge professional development day for us. And then also having the November 4th is kind of a, hey, this is how we can approach the rest of the second nine weeks. So we try to put it where there's a nine weeks where it makes sense as much as possible, and that feedback has been positive.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
And we saw it built in snow days, is that correct?
No, we don't do that anymore, we do it based off of, and you maybe can speak better to this component.
Really, with the time that we have during the school day, have been able to manage without building snow days.
It's built in with time.
Correct, it's built in with our hours. Absolutely.
Any more questions?
I know.
That's good.
Okay, alright, thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Stanley, you going to update us with several topics, as it says?
I do, I want to, first of all, welcome our new board members, echo what Mr. Jones said, welcome to the board, and if there's anything that you need from me, certainly always feel free to reach out, and I'll answer any question you might have, to make your experience here as positive as it can possibly be. And at the same time, I want to recognize the hard work that Mr. Brand did, we had a chance to recognize him last meeting, and also Mark Epperson for the hard work that he put in, thank him for everything, both of them for all the work that they did for our students and teachers. Construction at Brookfield High School is underway, I'll kind of save some of the details from Stan and her remarks, but we've knocking down some walls and we're putting up some fencing, and that project is off and running, so that's certainly exciting. And then I want to remind all of our board members that tomorrow night, we have our joint board meeting, it's going to be here in this room at 7 o'clock. And during that meeting, Mr. Rogers will talk about really projected revenues for the county, and I'll talk about overview in terms of priorities for our division, and then we'll see where the conversation leads us. and then we'll see where the conversation leads us. February school board meeting, just for your information, we'll start budget talks. The governor did release his his first budget and so we've had a chance to look at that. We've only had it for a few days though, so we gotta need a little bit of time to to process that. Our next board meeting will also be a time for public comment regarding the budget. January 29th, we have a program scheduled and Dr. Hale, I might need your help a little bit on this, but we have a program that we've asked Ms. Tanner to participate in. It's called Right Before Your Eyes and it's a program that's gonna be hosted at Rustburg High School, but we hope to do it at all of our high schools. And Amy, can you kinda comment a little bit on what that project is?
Do you want me either way?
And if I miss something, please share.
Sure.
What it is, the Right Before Your Eyes is really focused on parental awareness and education regarding teenage drug use and what that can look like. And so it is something that we really think is important for us to be able to to do and it's gonna be held at each of our four high schools. Rustburg High is the first one to be scheduled and it's Jan, it's February.
Yeah, it's February 29th.
It will be held there, but really wanted to help empower our parents and and help them. It is, it's not for students, it is for parents. But this is something that we do, really wanna help our parents because very challenging, it's ever-changing, ever-changing and it can be quite surprising. And so that is something that it will be at all of our four schools, so we'll definitely share that. But I do appreciate Ms. Tanner helping facilitate that.
Yeah, so we set up a simulation of what a teen's bedroom potentially could look like and what items there are. So this is wearing my Virginia Copper Extension hat as a parent educator in the community, so it's not, you know, school board role. I'm filling this from from my other full-time career, but it's very successful. We've done it in quite a few counties across the state and done it, actually done it at Brookville Middle School pre-COVID. But we set up a teen bedroom and what that looks like and what items that teens are taught very easily on the internet or they're from their other de, from dealers, from whatever. We've gathered, you know, up like Amy said, it's it's very up-to-date information on what these teenagers are using. And we set up a teen bedroom and parents are shocked at what is available to our teenagers and how easily it is to hide these items and have no clue. And so we set it up as if you walked in, put down a hamper of laundry, would you notice these items in your teen's bedroom? And then we take it a step farther and what do you do about it, right? Like it's one thing to notice it, but do we take it a step farther? And how you can have those very tough, challenging conversations with your teen and what that looks like. So, you know, I'm excited to bring it bring it back into Campbell County again, so.
Well, we've and we've talked about drug awareness and drug use in our county and we've recognized the fact that our kids are, it's available to them and that they are susceptible to the issues that 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 come with it. So we wanna partner with parents as much as we can to 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 help, to help fight that battle and keep it out of our schools and out of the hands of our kids.
What time is that?
6 to 8.
6 to 8, correct.
And we do stress that there's no children, I, Virginia Tech will not allow me to be seen as educating teenagers on where to hide their drugs and so it's very strict that there are no, you know, no students allowed. That they have to be a parent or guardian or an adult in the community.
And once the rest of the events are scheduled, I will share that.
One item I wanna bring to your attention, here recently, Elite Recycling won a contract with the county to, for solid waste. Dean Monroe from Brookville, who owns that company, came and spoke to me about recycling and what I thought about starting a recycling initiative in Campbell County schools. I know how schools work and I know that can sometimes change can be hard, but we jumped right in and we have replaced a dumpster at each of our schools with a recycling bin and our schools are doing fantastic. I met with Mr. Monroe and his son the other day and he said that we've got some kinks to work out, but it is going great. So just wanted you to know that we're doing our part to go green and we are teaching our kids to recycle and our principles ought to be commended because it really was a jump in with both feet. We're doing this starting tomorrow and and they handled it very well, so.
So what are we, what are we sorting out?
So it's pretty much, you've got dumpsters that handle the waste that comes out of our cafeterias and includes food. And then in the other container, we can put metal, cardboard, paper, pretty much everything else that you would use. So it's not like we're having to to recycle, you know.
Don't have to sort everything.
We don't have to sort everything, so they've made it as easy as it could possibly be for us. Same stuff, we're still kinda working on issues with capacity. We gotta make sure that if we've got trash, we've got a place to put it. So we're working out some of those kinks, but overall, it's been great.
Do they provide bins in the classrooms?
No, I purchased a bin, it's just to make, I asked the principals to do it so at least I could do it, buy some bins to help them carry it out, so.
Are they recycling the foam trays from the cafeterias that go in garbage?
I believe that would have to go into the regular garbage just 'cause of the food, that would be a hard sort for our staff. So anyway, I'll update you, hopefully it's gonna continue to get better and I'll let you know how it's going. And the last thing that I have for tonight is, I don't know if you've looked at the forecast, but tomorrow they're calling for an awful lot of wet weather. It's gonna be rain thankfully, but as the day progresses, the winds are supposed to pick up and by the end of the day, we think that it could be very gusty, potential gusts at up to 40 miles an hour. So we have started making our phone calls to Dr. Renella and we're dismissing tomorrow two hours early, just to get the kids home before it gets too bad. That's all.
All right, what about sporting events?
Sporting events will be canceled as well.
Something I asked and I can't remember what it was. All right.
But we still have our meeting. Ain't worried about us.
We still having our meeting?
We're still having our meeting, yes.
All right, that's good, thank you so much. Mr. Maddox?
I don't have any, I'd just like to welcome my new members and look forward to working.
Mr. Phillips?
Likewise, welcome new board members. Did make it to the holiday choral and band events at Rustburg High School. They did a outstanding job, both really good shows like mid-December there. And I tell you what, the band concert, there was standing room only, they packed that auditorium, so that was outstanding. The year before, they packed it too, so really good turnout to those concerts. Kids did an excellent job as well as the staff, music staff, pairing the kids for those, so really enjoyed those. Ms. Renella, you still in here? Yes, thank you for your invitation to lunch in February, looking forward to that. And Happy New Year to everybody, looking forward to a good year this year, so.
Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I just wanted to say I'm grateful to have the opportunity to serve and look forward to working with all of you. I don't have a lot to add, but I was able to make it to the Santa workshop at Eastwood Road and watch the kids pick out gifts for their family members and got to see my son as he watched our faces on Christmas morning, opened the gifts that he chose for us. And he had so much pride and told us all of his thoughts behind what he got for each of us and I just thought it was a really great opportunity for our kids to learn the spirit of giving, so.
Ms. Parker?
Uh, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we have the Christmas store all grades because after elementary school, I have to force my children to buy me a gift. And I'm not kidding. So thanks for the reminder, Chris, Ms. Vaughn. And yes, welcome to the ladies and also appreciate Mr. Epperson. I wish he was here, I'll reach out to him obviously and grab lunch with him, appreciate he was awesome. Honestly, he was the first board member to reach out to me when I was newly elected and we went to lunch. He was awesome and, you know, we talked pretty often and I'll miss working with him, but look forward to working with Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Tanner as well, of course, and all the gentlemen. And I really don't have a whole lot, the donations again were incredible. I mean, you know, if if, I wonder if we could do some type of a measurement, of course, on percentages because, you know, we have less money coming in here than some of the larger districts, but on a percentage basis, I I would, I'd venture to guess that we receive more donations than the majority of other school districts. I mean, I'm just impressed every month. So I appreciate all the donors who've donated and what a great thing for the Field House in Alta Vista. Can't wait to tell my husband, still stop talking about how Brookville gets everything and Alta Vista doesn't. So I'm gonna let him know about the Field House too when I get home. And I just appreciate everyone, Christmas events were fabulous at all the schools and I'm glad we've got, we're off to a good start this year and yeah, we'll we'll see if we'll all be here tomorrow at 7:00 PM. But thank you, everyone.
Dr. Miller?
Yeah, again, welcome to Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Tanner and like I've said, if there's anything I can do to help you with the the learning curve of of being on the board. Off to a good start, I talked to Mr. Bennett. He said this last week has been great, some of his discipline issues have, he's gotten a handle on or they've moved. He feels like he's got his school back, so, but we look forward to the new year and and yeah, I think I think we're off to a good start, so.
Ms. Tanner?
I just wanted to second with Ms. Vaughn, thank you for, you know, welcoming me on as a new member and I appreciate, I've had some, Ann Parker had taken me out to lunch and it was great to catch up with her and I look forward to having that opportunity with the rest of the board members to kinda get to know everybody, you know, everybody a little bit better. I do have to, I have to celebrate with my prop here. So as Dr. Stanley said, construction has started at Brookville and this is actually Ms. White's hat. I haven't claimed it, I'm gonna wait for mine, that hopefully will be coming hint, hint to Blair. But construction has started, so if you drive by the high school and you see the shipping containers and as someone who is looking at my 30th class reunion for Brookville High School this coming fall, it was really cool to see this progress coming in place. And so I just told everybody my age at this point. But anyway, the the shipping containers are out there for storage of our materials. I had the opportunity to kind of get a glimpse of what that initial start of construction earlier last week and so that was really nice to see the knockdown and and what's coming to the vision to come into place. And so I appreciate that opportunity to be able to do that. I'm gonna shout out, and it's probably shameless as a parent as well, but shout out for Brookville Swimming and where we have gone and where we started, where we've gone and what we've been able to offer the community and what is coming and the hopes for the future. And so we were able to acquire a starting system with Brookville Swimming. So for those of you that are not involved in a swimming, it takes 24 parents to run a successful swim meet. There are no other paid officials that run a swim meet. There are no other, you know, we don't get refs that are supplied. These kids are practicing not on school property, so there's other kind of, there's travel, there's stipulations on where their location is. We have to, in essence, you know, we're hosting our home meets that aren't on our school property, if that makes sense. And sometimes there's challenges with that. And part of it has been for, as a parent now with child number two that's a senior, I would be the one that chased around to find a starter system for 10 years. Even in the window of time when I had one that wasn't of age, I still chased the starter system around from local colleges. And shout out to Brookville Athletics, they have purchased a starter system for Brookville Swim Team. But knowing that Alta Vista and Rustburg both have swim teams, they swim with, excuse me, they swim with us where we host their meets mainly because we have the parent capacity to run that. We're able to to really do a swim meet without having to run around and the preamble that goes with that. So I really appreciate that support, we have a new starter. We were able to host our first home meet last Friday and Christine White sat at the scorer's table and I taught her all about how to score a swim meet 'cause I was short a parent. So she learned very quickly how to score a swim meet. And, you know, we talk about the opportunities for our special needs children and our adaptive programs. And a shout out to our coach at Brookville, we also have some swimmers at Rustburg as well that are special needs and are a part of our swim team and are absolutely embraced by the teammates, by the coaches, by the parents, everybody on that pool deck. And so I'm gonna extend an invitation to our board for September 7th to September, January 17th. I know sometimes I think first year and first school, it's a hard flip sometimes. January 17th is our senior night. Normally, we would say Brookville's hosting, it's Brookville Senior Night, but it is only Alta Vista and Rustburg that we are hosting and so it is a Campbell County Senior Night for swimming on Wednesday night at Cross White. Meet starts at 7 o'clock and I invite you all to come and kind of see a sporting event where no one is yelling at anybody, but they're yelling for everybody. And I think Christine can attest to that, it's a very welcoming environment, but you also see parents on the side of that pool deck completely engaged in what their child is doing. And you will see students who for the first time are trying swimming as 9th graders with no past experience that are absolutely embraced into a sport to where it's an individual slash team. You know, you're individually racing your own times, but you're working towards the points for the team and watching success at that level and where these kids have come. And we were able to do, both Alta Vista and Rustburg have middle school exhibition swimmers and we were able to incorporate them last week on a trial run and it was hugely successful. And so we'd really like to see that program expand with middle schools being able to have that swim team, you know, that swim meet opportunity and swimming opportunity. So just a shout out to Brookville Athletics and an invitation for all of you to, you know, pop in at Cross White. I know parking can be a challenge, but come see us, come see what that what that event looks like and what swimming truly is. It's not something that gets a whole lot of of audience, but you're able to see a whole lot of parent participation and buy-in and engagement and what that looks like on the side of the pool deck, so. Please come. Other than that, I've had a great opportunity to go around and visit the schools. I've hit just about everyone that's in my district and I'm looking forward to kind of expanding that and meeting the administrators that I didn't know from previous career with Campbell County, but still being able to kind of touch base and see. So I've been making those rounds and looking forward to continuing that.
Dr. Whitney Renella, do you wanna extend your invitation to come and eat soup and sandwiches while you're here and then tell us everything good and go on with Concord Elementary School?
I'm Whitney Renella, the other is Dr. Renella. Welcome to our new board members and and Happy New Year to everyone. February is School Board Appreciation Month and so our faculty always look forward to a lunch and invite them to use the people's food in February. And as someone who knows the Santa's workshop well and the shopping with pre-K friends all the way through grade, I'm glad you got to move with us, so thank you so much. And the play, so Mr. Jones was with us in December. We had between a Thursday night and a Friday morning, well over 1,000 people in our gym to see our 63, 4th and 5th graders perform in a whole new play.
When you see that gathering of 4th and 5th graders, it's amazing to see how much talent, both acting and singing that they put forth and and the thanks need to go out to all the teachers and staff that, you know, kinda orchestrated the thing, but it's, it was really, really impressive, really impressive. And I'll agree with you, of all the gifts that were transferred in my household on Christmas morning, the only two my grandson cared about were the two they got from Concord. They had to watch me open them and me to tell them exactly what I was gonna do with them, so. A hats off to you. All right, looks like, as much as I hate to say it, that's it. I'll entertain a motion, anybody got anything else?
I wanna welcome Captain Mike Bryant to to the room. Thank you for being here and we look forward to working with you and you being in the room. We're glad you're here.
I'll also say encouragement to the swimming. Friday night, I went to a basketball game at Rustburg and it was the first time I've been in that gym for a long time when it was full. I mean, it was, it was full, so it was very, get your blood going watching them. I remember when I used to run that fast, but not anymore. Go out and, go out and support your, you know, the winner, you know, athletics. It's, it's, it's quite the gathering place, so just, you know, support your athletic teams. Nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Miller, second by Ms. Parker. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? See you tomorrow. I'm scared to cut this thing off. How do you cut it on?